Twelve twenty twenty five meeting. Liz, can you take a roll?
Yep, Commissioner Austin, Baswa, Campbell, Kerber, Purdy, Rosted, Sailor, Urbanski, and Chairperson Brass.
Here. With that, we'll move on to adopt the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Austin, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then we have visitor presentation. So that would be anyone that's here tonight or online, if there is someone that would like to address the commission for something that is not on the agenda tonight. Anybody online?
Not seeing any. If anyone's here for visitor presentation, if you want to raise your hand, online.
And again, that'd be for anything that's not on the agenda tonight.
I think you are okay to proceed.
Uh, with that, we will, we don't have previous media minutes tonight, so we'll move on to no consent items. We'll move on to action item seven A. Public hearing, the recommend approval of the preliminary plat and rezoning of Fultonwood, Pulte Homes, PC twenty twenty four dash twenty one. Liz, or Ashley, whoever's Liz, if you would take it away, thanks.
One second here. Okay. Can you all see my screen up there? Great. Um, thank you, planning commission members. Excuse me. We have a preliminary plat and rezoning application in front of us this evening for the development known as Fultonwood, uh, which encompasses the Englund parcel and the parcel owned by the Friends family, um, that is two acres in size. Uh, this development is proposed by Pulte Homes. Before I get into kind of the details of the request, um, I did want to spend a little bit of time on the city's overall land use process, since we have a few new planning commission members in the room here. Um, so when we have land use applications come in, most of them do go through our three step process with the city. Um, so it's concept plan as first, preliminary as second, final as third. That first step, uh, in the process, our concept plan step, um, is a higher overview of the project being proposed. Um, it generally looks at kind of the, that initial feedback, um, or identifying issues or any concerns about the project on that first step. So you don't see a lot of details necessarily, um, during that first step. It's meant to kind of, uh, highlight or give a general overview of the project and what's being proposed, uh, so that it can help inform the next steps. Uh, the second step, um, is our preliminary, um, and sometimes that's coupled with, uh, other requests too. Uh, in this instance, tonight, uh, we're looking at a preliminary plat and a rezoning request. Uh, so at this step, uh, in the process, we do get into more technical deep details and review as a part of that step. Um, so we're looking at civil drawings, we're looking at architectural drawings, um, as well as, um, specific reports, uh, related to those, traffic reports, stormwater reports, wetland delineations, um, those sort of things. At this time, it, this gives the developer, uh, the opportunity to start responding and addressing some issues that have been brought up during the concept plan, uh, start laying down some groundwork as to how they will be addressing those, um, to move them on to that final and third round. Uh, so at final, um, is the third and final step. Uh, typically at that step, um, the issues should be close to resolved, um, and what we like to say dotting i's and crossing t's at that point. So you usually see a pretty uh, smaller review as a part of that final step. And for you guys, you'll typically see final items on consent agenda. So they don't require uh, that discussion that normally happens at concept and at preliminary. Um, and that's usually if they're, they're meeting most, if not all of those, um, uh, conditions of approval that you've laid out in there's, in those first two steps. Um, at each of these steps, uh, for you as planning commission, um, you are making a recommendation, uh, to our city council on uh, the proposal. Uh, so you are not making necessarily a final action on anything. You are more so providing your input, um, to provide a recommendation to council for them to act on and provide that final uh, approval or denial. Um, so there's three ways that you guys can take a look at projects as they're coming through each of these steps. Um, you're either recommending approval of a project, you're either recommending denial, or the third option would be tabling a request. In the event that you table, uh, you're, you're basically asking for that item to come back at a later time to, for you guys to see. Um, most often, um, you're making a recommendation of approval. Um, if you're making a recommendation of denial, you are stating your reasons as to why you're denying, um, or making a recommendation of denial to city council. Um, any questions on that before I kind of move into the project? Uh, just wanted to lay that out, uh, for you guys, uh, so that you're aware of kind of how the city's process works here. So for this application tonight, we're at that second step. We've already gone through the first step and I'll kind of go over that in my next slides. So the site in question, uh, this evening is located, uh, on the city's southwestern border, uh, with the city of Carver. Um, it's highlighted in orange on this screen here. So the surrounding uh, areas, uh, I'm going to go to the next slide here, really include, uh, County Road sixty one on its north side, Highway two twelve on its, uh, northwest side. We have Spring Creek Drive on its, uh, southern side, which is within um, the city of Carver's jurisdiction. And then Mount Hope Road on its eastern side, which would provide that access off of, uh, County Road sixty one or Chaska Boulevard to access Spring Creek Drive. Uh, so the property includes, uh, both the property owned by the Englund family and, uh, the two acre parcel owned by the Friends, uh, family. Um, just to give you a little bit of background in terms of, in terms of previous approvals and other meetings that have occurred, uh, in relation to this site or how it relates to this site. Um, so back in June of last year, uh, the Friends property, um, uh, and, uh, with the Worm property, which is highlighted in blue on this screen here, uh, went through a preliminary plat approval, uh, for a hundred and sixty-two detached single family lot subdivision. Um, and they did, did get that preliminary plat and rezoning approved, uh, in June of last year. Um, they're in the process of getting their final plat approved, uh, which you'll probably see, um, in the next coming months here. Um, we just want to lay out that there's other approvals that have happened around the area, which also kind of included this two acre Friends property. Um, and then when developers or applicants apply for a concept plan, they are required to hold a neighborhood meeting before they apply for that concept plan. Um, so they did hold that meeting back in July of last year, um, and received a number of comments from the neighboring residents, um, which were all included in, uh, the staff report. Um, so they did, uh, get their concept plan, uh, approved by both, uh, or recommended for approval by planning commission, then ultimately approved by the city council back in September of last year. So they're at that second step with us. Um, uh, the developer did hold an additional neighborhood meeting on January twenty eighth of this year. Um, so now that they are including the two acre Friends parcel as a part of their overall project area, um, there were a few properties outside of that original notification limit. So they, um, uh, uh, conducted an additional neighborhood meeting to include those eight properties that were outside of that notification. Um, they did not have anyone show up as a part of that meeting. Um, so no further comments were received at that time. So I want to reference a couple of the changes that have occurred since concept plan, um, and what's being shown in this preliminary plan. Uh, so both of those plans are shown on this screen here. The concept plan is the upper exhibit and then the proposed preliminary plan is that lower exhibit. Uh, so when the concept plan came through in September of last year, um, they showed forty-nine lots on eighteen acres, or what was the, just the Englund parcel at that time. But they did also show a ghost plat, um, of three additional lots on the Friends parcel that's immediately east of them. Uh, so there was anticipation that this development would absorb into, um, the Friends property to the east of them. So now, uh, with this preliminary, they are in a formal, um, uh, uh, agreement with uh, the Friends parcel to include that as a part of the overall project area. So some changes, um, that you'll see with this preliminary plan is that the project area is now roughly twenty acres in size versus eighteen, um, where it started, now including the Friends parcel. The lot count has also changed, uh, since concept plan with the addition of the Friends parcel, uh, in adding four additional lots. So uh, total lot count for this preliminary plan is at fifty-three lots. Um, the access into the development has also changed. Um, as you can see in the concept plan, there were two access points onto Spring Creek Drive. They have condensed that down to one, uh, that would line up with Birch Street, um, that is just to the south of this development. Um, also, uh, with the advisement and conditions laid out in concept plan, they did uh, include a tot lot into their development in response to, uh, the guidance from planning commission and council. Um, and I'll show a, a later exhibit or a later slide, kind of zooming into that. Um, and then pedestrian facilities like sidewalks, um, have been included, uh, with this plan on both sides of the street, which meet, uh, city's policy. Um, in addition to that, um, they're looking at some uh, design approaches at the intersection of Spring Creek Drive and Birch Street, uh, to include bump outs, um, where a pedestrian crossing is proposed to go to connect into the trail on the south side of Spring Creek Drive. And I'll show a, another slide of that later on. Um, in terms of existing conditions of this overall area, so like I've mentioned before, this property is uh, consisting of two separate parcels, one that's owned by the Englund family, which takes up a majority of the project area at eighteen acres. And then the second parcel owned by the Friends family, which is roughly two acres in size. Um, the Friends parcel is completely vacant, um, has been farmed for a number of years. Um, and then the Englund parcel does contain a homestead and then a variety of outbuildings on the property and some agricultural farm use as well. Um, this property again is on the border of Chaska and the city of Carver. Uh, so the city of Carver is immediately south. Um, they also, uh, own or have jurisdiction over Spring Creek Drive. Um, so we've been in coordination with the city of Carver, uh, through this process, um, to make sure their needs, um, and, uh, their needs for the street and for utilities and so forth, um, are accommodated as a part of this project. Um, and then also to note, um, the utility proximities to this parcel um, are still a ways away, um, but with High Point Vista's or with the Friends Worm property developing and still planning to do so this summer, uh, will bring the utilities basically to the intersection of Chaska Boulevard and, um, Savannah Way or Mount Hope Road. So the request this evening specifically is for preliminary plat, which is the subdivision of the property into fifty-three uh, single family detached lots. And then in addition to that, uh, the request includes a rezoning, uh, from the open zoning, zoning district to a planned residential district, specifically PRD eighty-eight for this, uh, project. Um, in terms of how this project, uh, meets our comprehensive plan, which is our long range plan for the city. Um, again, the property is currently zoned open, which is a holding zone until the property develops, then it would be rezoned to a more appropriate zoning district. Um, the guidance for this property is for low density residential, which allows for two to five dwelling units per net acre. So the project or proposal, um, is at roughly three point one uh, dwelling units per net acre. So right kind of in the middle of that threshold. Uh, this is the preliminary plan on this screen here. So again, um, a total of fifty-three lots are proposed. Um, twenty-three of those will be facing or have access onto Spring Creek Drive um, and have driveways, um, along that stretch, kind of mirroring, uh, what is seen on the south side of Spring Creek Drive. Uh, the remaining thirty would come off of the proposed internal street system. Um, uh, that will form in two cul-de-sacs, um, from that, uh, street access. The lots will range in size, um, between zero point one seven acres up to zero point five. A more, majority of them will be at kind of that point one seven or point two size. Uh, the point five is, um, uh, the larger parcel, uh, at the western end of the development. The home sizes proposed, um, will range in size from twenty-four hundred up to three thousand plus square feet. Um, there'll be two-story homes, um, to help, uh, match or mirror the, the homes that you see on the south side of Spring Creek Drive. Uh, ponding areas will also be included as a part of this development, um, both on the east, north, and west sides of the property. Um, the top images here are the housing product, uh, that's proposed for this development. So there'll be two-story homes with two-car garages and some will have options for that third car or third stall to be added on or be a part of the, the plan that gets built. Um, and just in comparison to the homes that exist on the south side of Spring Creek Drive, which are shown uh, below on this slide. We did ask the applicant to evaluate, uh, options to include another housing product within the development, um, which they provided a pretty thorough analysis um, in their submittal to us. Um, uh, basically the conclusion was they're not including another housing product. Um, this basically came about, uh, just due to, um, this area in particular, kind of having its own, um, development. It has, um, uh, pretty defined edges and, um, there's always an opportunity to explore including other housing products, uh, within an area that's predominantly detached, single family. Um, they did provide reasons as to why it wouldn't work here. I'm not going to go into too much detail. We provided that in the report. Um, but, uh, in some, um, uh, we do think they did some thorough research to understand if this site would be, uh, appropriate for an additional housing product, uh, beyond the detached, single family. Um, and we do agree that there are other areas, um, suited for uh, different housing products to occur in the southwest Chaska area. So this isn't a one all be all site or the ultimate site to do this. Um, so there are other opportunities that the city would, um, be able to have input on, uh, when those come through. Um, I also want to note, uh, some of the changes that'll happen at the intersection of Chaska Boulevard and, um, Mount Hope Road or Savannah Way. Um, uh, currently with the High Point Vista's, uh, development application, they're going through that, uh, design process with Carver County, uh, at the intersection there that has some effects on just how traffic and access will work from this overall site. They're looking at, um, an interim condition and ultimate condition for the intersection of, um, Chaska Boulevard and Mount Hope Road or Savannah Way. Um, the interim condition really is, um, kind of that onset or that beginning condition of when High Point Vista's comes through, um, and what's needed at that time, um, to support that development and what's kind of existing out there. Um, and then also looking at an ultimate condition to serve kind of the full build out of the surrounding area. Um, at this time, just with some recent, um, meetings with Carver County, uh, the interim condition is kind of what's being, um, uh, moved forward at this time with the High Point Vista's development. Uh, the interim condition is a two-way stop, um, intersection, um, with dedicated left turn lanes, um, and that is shown on the top exhibit of the slide here. The ultimate condition, uh, again, would be more so far out into the future, um, but would essentially be a single lane roundabout to help support kind of the overall uh, surrounding area and growth, uh, for the surrounding area. But again, uh, at the beginning, um, of development, um, that two-way stop control um, intersection is, is being looked at at this time. Um, in terms of park space, um, we kind of provided an analysis of, uh, the nearest public park spaces to this area. So uh, the nearest spaces either within Chaska or within Carver are over a half a mile away. Uh, so this is really where, um, the decision or guidance to, um, include a, uh, a tot lot as a part of this development, uh, was, um, included as a condition of approval because of, um, how, uh, separated, uh, this property is from, uh, adjoining, uh, park facilities. Uh, so they have included a tot lot. Um, a zoomed in exhibit of that is shown on the bottom left-hand side of the screen or slide here. Um, so it'll be on that western cul-de-sac, um, in this development. It will be HOA owned, so uh, the HOA of this development would be maintaining that. Um, just in terms of some trails and sidewalks planned, uh, for this uh, project, um, sidewalks will be included on both sides of the streets, um, and on the north side of Spring Creek Drive, which they are showing to wrap around, um, uh, along Mount Hope Road and basically up to that intersection of Chaska Boulevard and Mount Hope Road. Um, in addition, um, which has been some guidance from both the city of Chaska, but also Carver is to ensure that a crossing can be achieved, um, across Spring Creek Drive so that residents can access the trail that sits along the south side of Spring Creek Drive. Um, so they are including a pedestrian crosswalk, um, on the east side of that Birch Street, Spring Creek Drive intersection. Um, in addition to that, they are showing some bump outs too, to help provide a safer connection there. And that'll be continued coordination, uh, with the city of Carver to ensure, um, their standards are being met for that. One area that we noted that, um, with the inclusion of the Friends parcel on the east side, um, you know, there's some further evaluation that, uh, would be helpful to understand if there's a more direct, um, pedestrian, uh, connection on the east side to connect into the proposed sidewalk system along Mount Hope Road. So we've kind of highlighted that area to further look into that. I, I think it'll just, uh, require some coordination with city staff here and maybe walking out there to kind of understand, um, if there's other opportunities that exist, um, that would be able to follow kind of the natural path of where people are wanting to get to. And really this is kind of bolstered with the fact that the community park that's planned in the Chaska limits, um, will be about a half mile north of this property and you have to cross the county road to get there and people are going to want to walk there. It's going to have plenty of amenities to bring people over there. And so how, how can, uh, the development really, um, follow that natural path of where people are wanting to go? Um, in terms of landscaping and tree preservation for the site, uh, so they are showing, uh, boulevard trees for the internal streets and a, um, so buffering along County Road sixty-one or Chaska Boulevard. There are, um, existing trees that exist, um, on the northwest side in between, um, the highway and this proposed development that will remain intact. So it'll provide a natural buffer from the highway on the northwest side there. Um, tree preservation, uh, a total of, uh, sixty-two trees were surveyed, uh, that fall within our survey requirements. Um, a part of that fifty-two will be removed as a part of this plan. Uh, majority of those trees do fall within kind of the center of the site around the homestead and those outbuildings, as well as along the perimeter of the site, along Spring Creek Drive. Uh, majority of those really are ash trees, elm trees, spruce, walnut, and then a few, um, oak and maples are sprinkled within there. Um, but they do plan to preserve, uh, some of those larger oak trees that exist on the western side of the site. Um, so a total of ten trees will be preserved as a part of this plan within the limits of the project area. And four of those being some pretty significant oak trees on that west side that range in caliber inch from thirty-two inches to fifty-four inches. Um, so that'll be a nice additive on the, on the west side and a good buffer too. Um, and then also there is a memorial tree. If you drive along Mount Hope Road, there is a memorial tree on the corner of Mount Hope Road and Spring Creek Drive. Um, this was put in back in two thousand eight when a construction worker, um, died, uh, near that intersection. Um, and that tree was put up to commemorate them. And so, uh, we've made it known to the developer and they're, at this time are, um, trying to, uh, save that tree, um, in and around the improvements that are planned for this project. Um, just a few cross-sections to show kind of the, uh, relationship of the adjacent roadways to the, uh, development area. So Chaska Boulevard will sit a, a little bit higher than the proposed development. Um, they will include a layer of buffer trees. They will include a layer of buffer trees to help with screening and noise buffering. And then with Highway two twelve, it'll be roughly four hundred and fifty feet away from the nearest home site to the edge of the road. And there is a pretty mature line of trees within that spacing to help buffer. So a few things for them to work on for final, one being Boulevard design. So placement of trees within the boulevards along Spring Creek Drive and then also looking at opportunities along Mount Hope Road. So further evaluating that, further evaluating that pedestrian connection between the east side of the project up to Mount Hope Road. And then continued coordination with both us, the City of Chaska and the City of Carver on Spring Creek Drive, both in the utility corridors, the overall design of it and right of way needs for that. And then lastly, including outlots over all the stormwater ponds and accesses to the stormwater ponds proposed that they'll need to show in their final plat. So with that, we're asking you to make two motions this evening. One is to make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Fulton Wood and then based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. And then a second motion to recommend approval of the rezoning to Planned Residential District eighty-eight and then based on the draft ordinance that was included. Happy to answer any questions. We do have representatives from Pulte here to help answer questions where needed.
Thank you, Liz. Bring it back to commission for discussion here. First, welcome Commissioner Siler, Ross Sed. Nice to have you. So at this point, then we'll discuss amongst yourselves, any questions for the staff, any questions for the applicant? And so we'll start off there. Anybody have anything?
Good to see the sidewalks being added in.
I thought they did a really good job.
Tot lot being added in.
Outlet is.
And the tar, I mean, yeah, that's it's a big.
And the location.
Yeah.
And going down to the one entrance.
Yeah, it does seem as if they took almost all of our recommendations.
Right. Looks really nice.
Concept and incorporated in one way or another. Plan looks a little better with the pond clearing the French property.
Right.
Yeah. Any questions on the additional access from maybe the roundabout to the walking way that they described? Or any thoughts on that, Robansky?
Question on the roundabout, future roundabout. So originally this would be built with just a two-stop intersection. Further on down, why would we spend money on rebuilding an intersection now and then having to redo it five or 10 years later?
That's a great question for Carver County, I think.
I can weigh in on that.
So County Road sixty-one, this segment of it was once part of two twelve. And so, you know, Carver County inherited it. Don't get into too much detail, right, of the state. Part of that is our our funds to make improvements to County Road sixty-one. When the county's ready to do that and the state, you know, helps fund that to that for that transition. So the county is intending to do a project that would be much more comprehensive than simply that that access point when that time comes. But they're not at that point to execute that right now. And so that's that's kind of where we land where we're at for the time being. Hopefully that helps. Yeah. Any further details? I'll second Liz's. Get the county involved.
So I got a quick question. So is there going to be a sidewalk that I'm looking at Google Maps here? Maybe it's the maybe it's the path. So the way that access community park is it come cross like from this development to come across Spring Creek, walk on that path, use the crosswalk and then on the east side of Mount Hope, let's call it east and go north. So that's how they would access that. Okay. And so were you looking for something maybe on the end of that right cul-de-sac straight down to the path or something? Or what were you kind of think? What was the city kind of thinking?
Yeah, and I don't think there's a truly a defined path that needs to happen there. I think some additional evaluation is needed to understand, you know, how people are going to be traveling up to the community park. You know, I think you.
Come out that cul-de-sac and take a shortcut across the little.
Potentially. Yeah, I think there's a couple of different ways.
And then do a quick little skirt across the county road.
Yeah.
I mean, really, right? Okay.
Yep. So I think it's just kind of understanding what those movements are going to be and
Yeah.
there's an opportunity that makes sense and is for direct.
Makes sense.
Right. So.
Okay, I I don't have any question. Well, it's a public hearing, so I got to open it up. But does anyone else have any questions for staff or city? Okay, so at seven thirty-three, I'll open up the the meeting to the public. If anyone wants to address the commission, they can, or if any of the commission has questions or Pulte or the applicant, this is the time. Is there anybody here for this on the agenda?
Good evening. My name is Haley Daly with Pulte Homes of Minnesota. Our address is sixteen fifty West eighty-second Street, Suite three hundred, Bloomington, Minnesota. I just wanted to thank you for your time tonight as well as staff's assistance in getting us to this point. And if there are any other questions, I can answer them, but we're happy to be here.
Thank you. Haley, would this, would the HOA be the same HOA that is on the other side in the Carver side then?
No, this will actually be a separate HOA because the north or yeah, it's a pretty chilly. Thank you.
Someone shaking, no? Good, okay. With that, then if no one wants to address the commission, I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-five. Bring it back to the commissioners here. And.
I'll I'll start. I mean, this this is to a certain extent kind of an infill project, right? And I think they did a really good job, especially with the recommendations that we have brought forward during concept plan. There's not a whole lot of changes that you can make and it matches the the house styles on the other side of the road too. So I like it. Good buffer from two twelve and from sixty-one there.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a really great job. It's refreshing. All right. Well, with that, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council for preliminary plat of Fulton Wood subject to the following twenty-three conditions. Is there a second?
A second.
Kerber, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we need a motion to recommend approval for the rezoning from open to Planned Residential District number eighty-eight for Fulton Wood based on the draft ordinance.
All move.
Okay, second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to the second item. Do you recommend approval of the Tolero concept plan, Tolero Curve concept plan? Who is presenting that? Ashley, all right?
There we go. Thank you, Chair. Even with a new computer, got up for this, we're still a bit behind. Tonight before you is a concept plan by Quadriga Ventures for the property at thirty-nine ten Bavaria Road. That property, for those of you who may not be familiar with it, is located in the northwest quadrant of the city. That kind of white opaque area is outside of the city boundary. To the west, you have the Cheval Development and then directly to the north, you have eighty-sixth Street and to the east Bavaria Road. As Liz went through in a lot of detail earlier this evening, Chaska's three-step process. The concept plan before you this evening is in that first phase. So you'll unlike the previous proposal, the plans you are going to see this evening are really high level and generalized. And so staff's review of those plans is also high level. And what we're doing at this phase is really identifying the issues that we want to have resolved and calling out any additional information that we'd like to see as the project moves forward. So again, you will, if the project were to move forward, if the applicant decides to move forward, this project would come back before for recognition to the City Council. So the thirty-nine ten property is roughly thirty acres in size. There is a single-family home, three larger accessory buildings, as well as some smaller agricultural type structures. That's generally clustered in the northeast corner of the property. The remainder of the property is is relatively flat with pretty minimal gray change across the entire site. You'll note that that highest point is kind of in the northwest corner and then it slopes downwards towards the cul-de-sacs to the west and the southeast corner of the property. Majority of the property is currently used for horse pasture. So you have, if you've driven in that area, you've probably seen the horses and the white fence out there. So that's the property we're talking about this evening. The development site that's coming before you is roughly six acres in size and located in the southwest corner of the property. And if you've been on the commission for a little bit, you know that my presentations generally go into a lot of detail on the plans and kind of breeze over the background information because I go into that detail in the report. I'm doing it a little bit different this evening. So I'll briefly go over the concept plan and then we're going to spend a majority of the rest of the time going through the background and how that led to the concept plans define. So the concept plan is ten single-family lots. It's accessed by a new cul-de-sac extension coming off of Tolero Curve. The lots would be would be roughly sixty feet wide and would range in size from roughly seventy-five hundred square feet up to nine thousand square feet. Utilities for the site are available from Tolero Curve, but the stubs are currently located further south than where that new street alignment is coming in. So there would be a relocation that would need to occur to kind of shift those utilities to align with that new street. Stormwater from the site would be collected and directed towards a new basin that would be constructed on the southeast corner of the development. Excuse me. And the concept plan is also showing a vegetative berm that would buffer the development both on the east and the west side. Now, the plan doesn't include, as you may note, a lot of the details that you saw as part of that previous plan as it relates to the overall heights of that berm and width of that berm. There's a little some of the vegetation that would be planted on top of that. But you'll also note that your report includes a condition of approval requiring that information to come, as is pretty typical with a concept plan. So now the property's current guidance by the twenty forty comprehensive guide plan is rural residential. This land use designation is used by the city's comp plan to really protect the city's green belt, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about in just a moment. It's important to note that the city is currently operating under the twenty forty comprehensive guide plan. For those, for the new commissioners, that plan was formally adopted in in twenty twenty and is really intended to serve as a twenty-year plan to guide a number of different things within the city, such as land use, transportation, the natural environment and the protection of those, as well as parks and trails and public facilities. So as I previously noted, the the land use is guided for rural residential. So what does that mean? And if it's intended to protect the green belt, what does what is the green belt? So the green belt is a really important objective that's identified within the comp plan. It's establishing a perimeter around the city to preserve and enhance Chaska's identity and sense of community. So really separating it visually and physically from surrounding communities. The green belt wasn't formally introduced until the city's twenty or two thousand comprehensive guide plan. But some early rezonings and planning work in the early nineteen nineties really laid the groundwork for establishing that green belt. The, as it relates to the green belt, the plan does outline three policies to allow for and establish parameters for development for properties within that green belt. The first is rural development, which really limits development to properties that are larger than five acres and limiting the development on those sites to no more than four homes per forty acres. The second is identifying nine key community entrances. Those entrances are these little orange diamonds that kind of come around the perimeter of the city. And so what those are are really the they're they're located at the entrances of the city, kind of along those busier roads. So Bavaria Road, Engler, Chaska Boulevard, et cetera. The plan really calls for the view sheds at these community entrances to be extremely important. And the amount of kind of the obstruction of the roadway and development or excuse me, of development from the roadways increases as the road classification increases. The third policy established in the guide plan is really an alternative to that first policy. And so really, it's allowing for with a comp plan amendment to cluster your development. And in order to do that, it outlines a number of different objectives that your development would need to meet in order to qualify for that cluster development. So some of those include ensuring reasonable and appropriate connections and integration into the city's utility and street networks. Again, protection of the view shed with the highest protection occurring along those bigger and busier roads and at community entrance points. Bavaria Road, again, falling into that category. So you can see one of those key community entrances is in the northeast corner of the site. And then also prioritizing and protecting open space and natural spaces through a number of priorities, including restricting density to roughly one dwelling per acre. And roughly one-third of the site can be developed, leaving two-thirds of the remaining property undeveloped. So an example of that third priority would be the Cheval Development, which again, as I mentioned earlier, is just to the west of the subject property. Should have all's development began with a concept in two thousand and five. It envisioned a hundred and ten homes on a three-acre or three hundred acre site. And it really called and outlined a very high preservation of natural resources and the establishment of open spaces. So those high priority natural resources and open space was held to the highest level of priority. As the plan continued through the development, the city and the Metropolitan Council approved a comprehensive guide plan and the master development plan, along with a final plat for the initial Cheval Development in two thousand and six. That approval effectively shifted what would have allowed twenty-seven homes on ten-acre lots across that three hundred acre. That approval effectively shifted what would have allowed twenty-seven homes on ten-acre lots across that three hundred acres under that first rural development policy of the green belt to allow a hundred, or excuse me, two hundred and thirty homes on roughly a hundred and ten acres of developable land, leaving a remaining hundred and sixty acres to be open space, parks, and trails. And so that's a lot of numbers, so I'm going to simplify it a little bit better as it's outlined in the Cheval master development plan, which really breaks it down to, again, that one-third developed and two-thirds undeveloped ratio. And that ratio, again, memorialized by the master development plan, really gets to maintaining that maximum density across. You'll notice that the subject property, the thirty-acre site right here, is included in the Cheval master development plan. So the comp plan amendment and that master development plan did evaluate development on this site. The comp plan amendment in two thousand and six really contemplated two concepts for this property. The first would have used up the two remaining building eligibilities under that rural residential policy. The second was a more clustered development mirroring that were shown on the west side of Tolero curb. At the time of the amendment, the property owner, Hohn, at the time, was unsure which of the two concepts he would prefer. However, as the project continued to move forward, it was memorialized in the master development plan that his preference was that secondary one with that more clustered design. So the one notable piece, again, of the master development plan for the overall Cheval is that it broke the entire three hundred acre site into kind of five areas or five categories based on their kind of location and proximity within the development. So four of them were more area-related. And then the fifth one was used to guide how the various open spaces and parks within the development would be used. So the Tolero neighborhood, as it exists today on the west side of Tolero curb, and the subject property were identified as part of the northeast neighborhood. This plan calls out the prominent wood features to the north and west of this neighborhood and also identifies the pasture that's on the subject property this evening as two of the most prominent features within this area. It was envisioned by this plan that this neighborhood, for Tolero curb, on both the east and west side of the new cul-de-sac, would be attached twin homes. They would generally have shared driveways. And, again, development being the same on both sides of the street. And the homes were envisioned to be up to about four thousand square feet. The Cheval fifth addition, so what we've been seeing is what I've been calling the development that's on the west side of Tolero curb, was approved in two thousand and seven. As part of that approval, those, what would have been, or what was originally shown as attached twins homes were detached into detached townhomes. The staff was supportive at that time of that conversion, finding that the unit count remained the same. It didn't change the overall density for the proposal. And really, it was going to allow for a diverse housing type within Cheval that was not otherwise available. The other important piece of that development as it relates to tonight's plan is that there was a thirty-six-foot-wide touchpoint at the right-of-way for Tolero curb that came up to that easterly property line. And there were two outlots that were identified, again, on that east side. And those were really intended to provide for future access for development of the subject property. So now we'll walk through what all of that background means and how it applies to the concept plan before you this evening. And really, this is where I'll start kind of laying out some of those issues and some of the items that we'll need in that next. So the concept plan before you this evening maintains the original ten units that were contemplated on the site, as well as the two-point-four-one of developed area. Again, that density, those amount of units, that developable area was contemplated as part of that one-third developed and two-third undeveloped ratio for that overall Cheval. Of revolve. However, you'll notice that the original concept plan, again, contemplated a more mirrored image of what happened on the east side with those attached units with access directly onto that Tolero curb neighborhood, excuse me, Tolero curb drive. And the concept plan before you this evening contemplates a new cul-de-sac extension coming up of Tolero curb. And so the, and part of that, that design was really driven by the fact that, as noted in your report, those outlots that I previously mentioned were acquired by the city after the Cheval fifth addition was plotted. And then the city did sell those outlots to the Tolero Villas HOA. So that's really the HOA that governs those existing Tolero curb. And so that, effectively, in that sale, the Tolero curb HOA does have some say and some authority for how that right-of-way and where that street connection occurs. And so for the last year, the applicant and the HOA had been in conversations about what would be the best way to move forward. And that HOA did not support that original mirroring concept. And that really pushed the developer then into pursuing a new right-of-way extension. So that's what you're seeing this evening. I skipped forward on the slide. My apologies. So as I previously noted, the property is located within the green belt. And given its proximity to key community entrance, protecting view sheds is going to be critical, is going to be extremely important as this project moves forward. Staff is supportive that the development is shown in the southwest corner of the site as that does allow for more room for there to be screening and buffering through vegetation and berming. So we were happy to see that. The approved landscaping plan that's shown in the upper screen and those cross-sections that are on the lower screen are part of the Cheval approval and the Cheval master development plan. So they really serve as the viewing, the screening plan that we will continue to evaluate the development against to ensure consistency. You'll notice from those cross-sections, and again, this is from the Cheval development, that viewing from the right-of-way, which would be over to the right-hand side of the screen, is significantly obscured from the roadway. So the concept plan this evening doesn't include all of the details that we would need in order to evaluate that view shed. And so included as a condition of approval, we've requested those details. One, I think, other important detail to note as it relates to development of a site and open space preservation is that this development and the concept that you're seeing this evening would really use up the development rights for the prop, for the entire thirty-nine-ten, excuse me, I'm saying it backwards, thirty-nine, yeah, thirty-nine-ten property. I said it right. First second guess to myself. I should never do that. It would use up the development potential for that site. So essentially, and as included in your report this evening, some sort of preservation mechanism, either conservation easement or deed restriction, would have to be implemented for the remainder of the property, essentially to protect that view shed and open space in perpetuity. Also noted in your report this evening, the two thousand and six amendment, the comp plan amendment, suggests that sewer and water for this particular site would come from the Cheval development to the west. However, also as noted in your report, we'll have to do some further review as to whether Met Council needs to do, or if Met Council would require a comp plan amendment. Because what's not clear is whether or not the property was intended to be included within the MUSA. The map that was included currently showed it just outside of that. And again, the MUSA is the Metropolitan Urban Service Area. So that's really the boundary that is overseen by the Met Council, limiting services and infrastructure for development within the Twin Cities area. So now moving into some of the specifics of the comp plan for the concept plan itself. The lot configurations with a few small revisions would be generally consistent with the existing Tolero curb neighborhood. The Tolero curb neighborhood today, those lots are over seventy-seven hundred square feet. And again, there are two lots within the proposed concept that would not meet that requirement. So we are, we have included a condition of approval just to do some lot configuration, reconfiguration to bring those minimum lot sizes up to be consistent. You'll also note from this chart that the proposed setbacks for the concept are consistent with that existing Tolero curb development. So moving into probably what has been the biggest part of the conversation as it relates to this development is how access would be provided. Originally, the applicant had submitted a concept plan that utilized that thirty-six-foot touchpoint as the way to bring the street through. While within the development site itself, the right-of-way would have met our minimum right-of-way with requirements, would have required a variance at that touchpoint to reduce it to about half of what our city requirements would be. We expressed, we have staff expressed concern related to a number of things when it came to that variance, specifically related to just overall constructability, how you would be able to get private and public utilities through that pinch point, snow removal and storage, and then also just future maintenance and reconstruction. So responding to those comments and some additional comments that came in from the Tolero Villas HOA, that new street, that new cul-de-sac was moved roughly sixty feet to the north. It's important to note that staff would generally support that relocation. But we do acknowledge that this kind of moves it outside of that right-of-way touchpoint. And so there would have to be some further coordination with the Tolero Villas HOA as, because it would require some property acquisition in order to do that. And one final note is that, as it's shown today, the cul-de-sac bulb wouldn't meet our minimum, or the Minnesota State Fire Coast minimum requirements for width. So there's also a condition of approval just to increase that up to the ninety-six feet in order to meet that requirement. Another theme that we heard coming out of some of our conversations with the HOA board, centered around construction access and if there would be ability to keep that traffic off of Tolero curb. And so there is a construction access just to the south. It was used for the construction of these stormwater ponds. It appears to continue to be used for the maintenance of those ponds. And so while the city does have ownership over a portion of that access, there is a Cheval ownership that is over the easterly part. And so while the city, it appears that the city does have some easement rights over that eastern portion, we have to do some further review to determine if those rights would allow for construction access. And if they don't, then there would be some additional conversation that would need to happen to determine if there's another alternative. So as required for concept plans, there was a neighborhood meeting held in November of last year. There were roughly twenty people that attended that meeting. They enquired just about overall density of the site and future development opportunities of that larger parcel. They also asked questions just about the new home in terms of design and size. They emphasized that what they would, their preference would be for those new homes to have basements. They also asked questions just about what the screening requirements were and what was being proposed. And then finally, again, they asked some questions just related to construction timeline, traffic, and access. Included in your report this evening were two comments from the HOA. The first was in preparation for a meeting that staff, the HOA and the applicant had in January. And then the second was some additional notes that they had, that they heard as part of the neighborhood meeting. And then I'll also recognize that before this meeting, you received a change memo that had two additional comments from residents in the overall Cheval neighborhood requesting that the new development be part of that overall Cheval HOA. Staff did note to, or respond to those two residents just to let them know that the city can't require the applicant to have the new development be part of that larger HOA, but we can require it. And we'll likely have more information on their HOA as the project moves forward. So just a few kind of recapping and summary comments for this evening. There are a number of things that would require follow-up. There's additional information that we would need in order to do some proper analysis, determine if there's comp plan amendments. Those items have all been included as conditions of approval in your report for this evening. So in addition to any of the feedback that you would like to provide this evening, we are requesting just some direction on, assuming that the HOA is able to work with the applicant to resolve, you know, issues around utility and street connections. Does the commission support the new configuration? So rather than that mirroring image having that new cul-de-sac construction. And then besides more detailed landscaping plans and cross-sections, is there anything else that you'd like to see to evaluate the view shed as part of that analysis? So with that, I'm going to turn it back to the commission for any questions for discussion.
Thank you, Ashley. For all the history there. So bringing it back to the commission. This one's a little more in-depth. So let's start off amongst ourselves with these questions for the city, for the staff. It's not a public hearing, however, we seem to have a few people here tonight, so I will let people come up and speak or questions or address their concerns. First amongst ourselves, if there's any questions for city staff, let's do that now or talk amongst ourselves.
Has a developer agreed to be a part of the homeowners association at this point, or are they fighting that?
Don't know. Doesn't seem like they've agreed to yet.
Oh, good. Yeah, I'm looking at here. My name's Megan Rogers. I'm an attorney with Larkin Hoffman, and I represent Quidriga Ventures. So it's our proposal that the Tolero curb HOA, the Villas, welcome these new homes into the HOA. That requires, under Minnesota law, a vote of one hundred percent of the current residents to allow us to join the HOA. We would, we are absolutely committed to joining the Cheval HOA as a whole. And the value of these properties is being a part of this community. And so that's absolutely something that we are pursuing as part of our project.
Perfect. Question for you then, expanding on that. So you're in favor of joining the Cheval HOA?
Absolutely.
And so I guess my question is on that. So if you join the Cheval HOA, do then, does a Cheval HOA have the authority or the? I suppose not, to not allow the development?
So I think two separate answers here. The
I saw some comments and some questions on some neighborhood meetings saying to Tolero HOA is required to have a hundred percent approval of its HOA members to amend their governing documents to allow additional homes in Tolero Association per MCIOA, which I don't know what per MCIOA is, but
Absolutely. Just for the state statute that governs how HOAs function within the state of Minnesota.
Yeah.
And so I think that there's two plans that we have approached as part of moving forward with this project. The first plan is the one that we originally submitted as part of the concept plan that incorporates a variance request to the city of Chaska, associated with utilizing the existing access point that was crafted as part of the Tolero Curve plat back in two thousand and seven. Now, through further engagement with the HOA, and I'll let the members, the residents of the community speak for themselves, there's concern about the location of that access point because it directly is across from two existing driveways. And they would like to see the access point offset. So moving it for the sixty-three feet north actually allows it to split an existing property line and not have those potential impacts to the neighborhood. And we are certainly happy to do that as well. That second plan is something that requires us to negotiate either an easement or purchase of property with, from the Tolero Villas HOA. And so that can be accomplished, again, via a driveway easement or access easement, or it could be an outright purchase of the land. And again, we have a letter of intent pending before the Tolero Curve HOA Board for Review that outlines sort of our commitment to the project and the things that we are offering for the benefit of this commission. We are either willing to purchase that property, purchase the outlot to be able to move forward, or alternatively, to essentially donate all of the green open space as coming into the Tolero Villas HOA and really formulating this as a new community as a whole. And again, those are decisions that are left to the HOA. The process that this project could proceed without their approval, again, would be through the original application, which incorporates utilizing the existing right-of-way and seeking variance from the city of Chaska for those standards.
Okay. Tolero Curve, does that have sidewalks on both sides?
Let me see. I'm looking at it. Just on the one side.
Just on the one side?
Yep.
And I see in the new proposed development, there are no sidewalks?
As of now.
At this point in time, we don't have sidewalks shown on the plan. However, in our sort of conversations through the neighborhood meeting, a plan would be to have a pedestrian crossing from the sidewalks on the east side across and then incorporate sidewalks as appropriate or as desired by the neighborhood or, you know, at the recommendation of the commission and the council within the cul-de-sac area.
Plus, everybody's here to talk about the chair and vice chair. I'd like to hear somebody speak in regard for what the homeowners are thinking here. Like to hear some actual voices.
We did have someone online. Do you want to start there?
Let's, yep, let's start there.
All right, Jessica.
Hi, good evening.
Yep, we hear you.
She gone?
Jessica, okay. Hold on one second. Jessica, you can unmute. There you are. Please give your address as well.
Yep, I'm thirty-nine, one, seven Valencia Lane in Cheval neighborhood.
Okay, you go ahead with your question.
Yep. So my question is, if these dwellings are built, does this then max out the Cheval dwellings per acreage and how that green space is calculated? So no further homes would be built on that remaining land?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, so the only person online?
Yes.
Okay. So if anyone in the audience wants to address the commission, any concerns, comments, thoughts on the development, now is your time. Then please state your name and address for the commission in the city.
Okay. My name is Susan Stinchfield. I'm at thirty-seven, forty Tolero Curve. I'm a homeowner of Tolero, and I'm also one of the board members of the HOA, currently the president. We have a couple of homeowners here, which I would like to also voice their concerns or their background. But Tolero Curve acquired the outlets back in two thousand and eighteen, I believe, because they were unpaid, there were unpaid taxes. So we purchased the outlets for the back taxes for the purpose of assuring that Tolero Curve had a buffer between our neighborhood and the adjoining farm, which is the thirty-nine, ten property. We did that even though those outlets were part of our common elements with our HOA. They were written into our governing documents as part of our common elements, but we did not own them. The previous developer, Mr. Igle, who developed Cheval, originally owned those outlets. They were the only outlets in Cheval that were owned by someone other than the Cheval master. All the outlets within the master are owned by, that are in Cheval are owned by the master, HOA. So we did that. We purchased that by a special assessment. Well, actually, it was a volunteer assessment of the homeowners to purchase that property. So every homeowner contributed to the purchase of those outlets for the purpose of providing a buffer. We also knew that that farm could someday be developed, but it was in rural zoning. So it was our impression, as many of us started building our home there, that they could build a total of three homes in that acreage. And one of them was already on the property, so they could build two more properties. We did not come into that neighborhood thinking that they were going to expand Tolero. And that's how it was presented to us when we were approached in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three with this this proposal from Quadriga. So the board was notified through a trickle-down. It was presented to the master board first, then brought to the Tolero board that this was a proposal that was coming from Quadriga. So we started having conversations with Quadriga at that point and very open conversations with a lot of feedback back and forth, working with them. That started in about January of two thousand and twenty-four. We wanted, when we were first presented with this proposal, the response was that we didn't want to expand Tolero. We had no intention of expanding Tolero. We were fine just the way we were. And so the first presentation, as you all heard, was the mirror image, which was part of the original master plan evidently. So we, at that point, said, we don't want this expansion of Tolero. And if this is how it's being presented as a mirror image, that's not what we want. Well, as the developer started trying to look at other options, we were presented with the cul-de-sac. And the cul-de-sac was not something we preferred. We didn't prefer any of this. But we wanted other options. So the other option, for varying reason, because the way the neighborhood is built, we already have a problem with snow removal with the way our driveways are presented on this property. We take all of the snow from the east side or the west side homes and push them onto our outlet. So we started trying to problem solve, how are we going to deal with snow removal? So that was part of the discussions with, is the mirror image really the best way to go? And we had a few neighbors that were very, and some of them are here, very interested in maintaining green space in that eastern side of Tolero. So we started looking at all the cul-de-sac plans. And the biggest, the biggest impact was on two driveways in terms of a road access, when they started looking at the original concept plan. And that was pretty much a stopping point for us to have further discussions. We needed to look at a different access point if we were even going to continue conversations with Quadriga. So they, we talked about a couple of different things, and a lot of it came down to feasibility for the developer. They didn't want to put a road that went in to the south and curve in because of the fact that the feasibility for building a larger road is what we understood was not something they were willing to do. So we had a homeowner meeting of our own, Quadriga presented. Megan wasn't there, but the CEO and the engineer did a presentation for our homeowners. And at that meeting, we had varying opinions. This conversation has caused, which I have talked about at the homeowner, that the homeowner meeting, they had caused a lot of dissension in the neighborhood. And we have a lot of difference of opinions. And a lot of it is because the road impacts some neighbors differently than it does others. The actually, the actual view shed affects some homeowners very differently than others. So there's a lot of different opinions.
But just in general, would you say, you're the president, you said, the HOA?
The president, yes.
Would you say the HOA is in favor of the cul-de-sac? Or you're in favor of the mirror image?
The HOA? Or me personally? I mean, I'm wearing, sort of, wearing two hats here. I'm a homeowner and I'm on the board. But, but I think that we started walking down the road of walking away from the mirror image because we, we really were having these conversations so that we could ascertain whether or not we actually had any authority to stop this. And we really didn't want a road. But that was the plan that they presented as a secondary option to not accepting the mirror image.
So what would you say is the general opinion of the
Well, I think we have one homer here that would prefer a mirror image. We had a couple of people in our own homeowner meeting that said, hey, 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 you know, who said we didn't want a mirror image? But then we have a lot of homeowners that would prefer this cul-de-sac because of the green space that it provides.
Yeah.
So again, it impacts every homeowner differently.
Every development.
Yes. So that plays into whether or not they would vote for a mirror image or would they vote for the cul-de-sac? So we just kept down the road of looking at cul-de-sac options.
Sure.
But I personally, if you want to know my personal opinion, I didn't want a road. And I didn't want a road as a homeowner. And I was also facing the fact that I happened to be the home that this road would have been directly driving into.
So we shifted it north.
So we shifted it to the north, so that's between my property and another homeowner's property who's here.
Yeah.
Who, during all of our meetings, I never wanted to suggest as a homeowner and a board member that let's do something that's better for me and worse for you. And I always said that at the homeowner meeting that we had with Quadriga. It's a difficult situation, but for safety reasons and for the purpose of that road really being operational within the neighborhood, it makes sense to move it.
Yeah.
Either south or north. We asked to have it even looked at to be moved south, and it didn't work in the scheme of things for the actual placement of the homes. The topography, I believe, it was better to move the road north. So we have had some very good conversations. The city, these people have been wonderful. They have been very open and encouraging dialogue between us and Quadriga. Quadriga has submitted a number of things to try to meet some of our needs. But basically, we've never come down to having anything in writing. Megan mentioned a letter of intent. We have not seen the letter of intent that came out of that letter that you saw that we had presented to Quadriga at the last meeting with the city.
Sure.
We have some conditions.
Yep. So I cut you short, but we try to keep it to three to five minutes of each person. And so we're not interested or involved in letters of intent or purchases. I just want to know the grievances you may have, short and quick, or not. And so we can try to address other
Yes. As an HOA, the HOA has to vote hundred percent in favor of adding additional because the additional property to the HOA, to the neighborhood, expired in two thousand and seventeen. So we have to change all of our governing documents. We have to do a lot of things, and we have to have a lot of votes to do that to allow for additional homes in the HOA.
Other options, they could have their own HOA.
Yes, they could have their own HOA, but, but as I think you heard the city say, and I think some of the other people in the neighborhood would suggest is that if they're going to enter Cheval through the Cheval entrance, and they're going to have access to all the amenities of Cheval, they should be part of Cheval. We also feel that we will not be able to control the architectural design of these homes unless they are part of the HOA. So if we can't stop this from happening, I guess basically is what it is, then what we can control is what they do within our HOA guidelines and according to our governing documents. So that's kind of how the board stands. And we have a number of things that we've asked for that we're waiting because it's always been conditioned on, we will look at these things if you say you'll give us the easement. And we look at it as, we'll consider the easement if we get these things. So.
Okay, so this is a little bit outside my realm. I'll refer to the city here with HOA.
Thank you for allowing me.
HOA approval to build homes is a new one for me. Whereas we allow it through the city city council process, the property owner has the right to develop their property if they meet within the guidelines. I'm not familiar with an HOA overriding the city. Is that, that can't be. Is that right?
Well, there's, so I wouldn't necessarily
Our city attorney here, I put
Yeah. Without getting into, you know, too much city, I don't want to put my city attorney hat on it. But it's not uncommon for an HOA to have different things that they're looking at, especially when it comes to design and maintenance or kind of more of those aesthetic type of uses that go above and beyond what our city code requirements are. But I wouldn't say that an HOA and their documents would trump city code and what we're reviewing. It would just be in addition to
Sure. Okay. Nick?
So offered.
In a minute, Matt, if you can come up. Yeah.
I know what Ashley is just summarizing. Sorry, Ashley, breathing into your cup. I think it's important for the planning commission to keep in mind that, you know, what you're reviewing in front of you tonight is applications that's been put in front of the city. HOA operates independently from the city. And so whatever decisions and review process that they need to go through is their independent process, right? And so I would encourage the planning commission to be taking into consideration the application that developers put in front of you, weigh in on that. You know, we can encourage that HOA discussions happen. And, you know, and ideally those things are on the initiative and move through the process. But at the end of the day, But at the end of the day, um, though, that's a whole separate, you know, independent process. It's not connected to the city.
Right. My concern was that, you know, obviously there's always with any development, some people just don't want it. Some people are in favor of it. Some people are indifferent. Um, you know, if it's a condition, I don't think we're going to make, I don't think it is a condition. We're not at that point yet, but you know, for them to join the HOA of Cheval or encourage it just in turn for HOA to know that they're going to vote no and no homes can go. Kind of get yourself into a circular.
I think there's a couple of things and this is me getting into very risky territory um, and pretending to understand how this HOA is set up. Um, but there's, there's a master Cheval neighborhood association and there's sub-associations within that. I believe Tulare Curb is, is its own sub-association. So I think there are different scenarios that can happen here. Um, um, with, you know, this development still being part of the master association. And then there's a different discussion as to whether this development is part of the Tulare Curb Association.
Got it.
These are all, you know, different things, right? Um, so there's, there's a lot of, I think intricacies within that. There's negotiations that the developer is going to have to undertake with both the Tulare Curb HOA and the, and the master association. And some of that depends on, um, you know, Tulare Curves, that HOA's desire to, you know, be a part of it or not. Right? Um, but I think in either case, there are options that the developer can pursue. Um, but I think, you know, for tonight, right? We're, we're back at the, at the concept plan that's in front of you. And that's all independent of the HOA discussions that.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
If, if they were to move it, right? If they were to move it north.
If they move it north, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Mary, Mary Leeful. And I live at three, six, six, nine Cavallo Pass, which is in Cheval. The overall Cheval, it is, I do not live within the Tulare Sub-Association. Um, as I just think it's important, and I think, I'm not sure I know your name.
I'm Nate.
Okay. There is a, I do think it's important that we differentiate between the overall Cheval homeowners association, of which I am president, and the sub-association of which, um, Suzie is a part of. And Suzie also was on the master board as well, too. So while the Tulare Board, Sub-Association Board, not the homeowners, but the Tulare Board has, um, taken a position, the Cheval, overall Cheval HOA has not done that yet. Um, I think we're receptive to, absolutely receptive to it. Uh, we just have not done that yet, uh, waiting for, or really allowing Tulare to handle it at this point. But I think there, it is an important distinction between the overall Cheval and Tulare.
I mean, I also just want to point out, you know, we've had multiple developments that have happened within the Jonathan Neighborhood Association, for example, right? Um, it, it is, I mean, it's kind of gone both ways, but it's not uncommon where the whole arrangement with the association is not, you know, fully known at this point.
Yep.
In the development process, right? So often it, that kind of materializes as it goes through, right?
Very plat, yeah.
Yeah. They kind of have a similar chicken and the egg type of thing that we've got, right? Where they need to know what the thing is before they can figure out.
What they're giving or not. Yep. Sir.
Um, Steve Tinker, uh, I live on thirty, on Tulare Curve, thirty-seven, sixty-four. Um, you'll be happy to know that I don't want to talk about the HOA. I have some ideas that I'd like to present to you, um, as far as the concept plan. And I don't know if that, if this is the proper time, but, uh, I'd like you to consider, um, having a landscaped island in the middle of the cul-de-sac, uh, that they're proposing. Uh, our current cul-de-sac has a landscape island. It would be, uh, I think very nice to have both cul-de-sacs look similar. I'd also like you to consider possibly requiring, um, trees on the north side of the, uh, development as a screen from the farm. Um, there's another thing that, uh, retention pond. Um, just to the south and slightly west of that retention pond, uh, Cheval owns a retention pond that is exclusively used for irrigation. And we're having trouble getting enough stormwater to, uh, meet our irrigation, uh, needs. So I'd like, uh, I know, I know Chaska doesn't control this. I know the county does as far as retention ponds. But I'd like to consider, have the county consider connecting the, uh, proposed retention pond to the irrigation pond that is just to the south and west of that, uh.
That irrigation pond used for the common grounds in Cheval?
It's the common grounds, you know, like in the entryway and so forth. So it's, yeah, it's stormwater. So it's, it's a good way to, uh, conserve water.
This is theirs.
Yeah.
This is the city's.
Got it.
This is theirs.
Okay.
Uh, all of the houses that are on Tulare Curb have side load garages. And I'm, um, I'm hoping that, um, that they, um, that they have the same. And that most of them are three-car garages. So I, I hope that, uh, as Quadriga gets to the, uh, to the design, that they have that. Streetlights, um, I'd like to know the number and location. Um, but also Tulare has, uh, I'm not saying it's a unique streetlight, but it's kind of an upgraded streetlight. So I'd like them to, um, be required to match the same streetlight, uh, look.
Be more at the preliminary stage.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I'm recommending a sidewalk only on one side of the street because as we have on Tulare Curve, we have a lot of problems with snow storage and removal. And if, um, currently, uh, on Tulare Curve, we're pushing, as Susan mentioned, all the way over to the, uh, east side of the street. Um, I think on the cul-de-sac, they might have the same, uh, problems of where to put snow. And, uh, the last question I would have is, uh, all of practically, well, all of the homes on Tulare Curve are, have walkout basements. There, and there, uh, most of the homeowners have developed their basements. It, it, uh, increases the value of the property. Um, I'd like to, hopefully I can, like to see most of the homes, uh, on the new cul-de-sac have walkout basements if possible. Those are my comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anybody else? Like to address the commission?
I just had one comment that was new information tonight was the question that the person online or asked. And that.
Uh, you'll need to step up to the podium, please.
Ashley mentioned it in her discussion and then the person online mentioned it, but we've never been told that with this development, that thirty-nine, ten would not be able to develop anymore of that farm. So that, that is new information for us. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Anyone else to address the commission before I kind of bring it back to talk amongst yourselves? Only once. Yeah. One twice. All right. Let's, again, it's not a public hearing. So if something sparks your mind, you can, I'll certainly take your input. But coming back to commission here, um.
Uh, sidewalk, right? I, I think city code requires sidewalk for both the sides. Is that right? I'd like, can they match with like, uh, whatever is there in existence?
The city does have a policy in our, as part of our subdivision ordinance that does have, uh, requirements for sidewalks and whiffs. So, uh, the, the proposed sidewalks would be reviewed as part of that policy in the next phase.
Okay. Um, I think, I'll just kind of start here. It's concept plans, so obviously there's a lot to work on here. Um, you know, Steve had some good thoughts. Um, again, at concept, I don't, I don't think we will add conditions, but certainly the attorney for the developers here and probably has notes going on what that some of the neighbors would like to see. There's some things that we can look for or potentially see how they may or may not have been incorporated at preliminary plat when it comes back. Um, I mean, it kind of seems as if, obviously you're going to have a mixed, some neighbors want this, some want that. The mirror image kind of goes out the way anyway, because the, they bought, they bought the outlots. I mean, and what probably was maneuver to try to not have development happen maybe. You know, I can understand how they're trying to save their green space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so now they're left with this cul-de-sac option. Um, I think it does work better not, you know, with going right in front of a specific house and kind of cutting them, moving to the north. So, um, again, homeowners easement, that'll all be between them. You know, by the time they come back, hopefully they have that figured out.
Right.
Um, in general, I mean, it, it does maximize the site. So no further development will happen on that, on that property. You know, at concept level, I think it's finite concept.
They're still in discussions too.
Yeah.
Talking, talking.
Right.
You know, let's keep discussions open.
Right. Exactly.
I'm sorry?
Long ways to go.
Long ways to go. Yeah. Long ways to go.
But I, I look at this as, as, um, it's unique, right? It's neat to have something that's unique all the time. And here, I worked on something similar like this years ago. And, uh, it didn't go through. And that chunk of land, and it's roughly thirty acres, is still sold to two different private landowners. One of them really liked dirt bikes.
Oh. You never know what you're not going to get.
Yeah. You had a dirt bike track in your backyard, whether you liked it or not. Um, so if I live in your neighborhood right now, I kind of like this. That's my thought process.
Yeah.
And it's, it's unique. And I think there's, there's good communication going back and forth. So I like to see that, too.
Um, yeah, fine. It's a fair point. It sounds like they're going to be, I mean, we haven't seen renderings or not, but it sounds like they're going to be nice, nice homes that should match that, match the neighborhood. Um, okay.
I mean, the price point of these homes are going to be a million dollars, bros.
I don't know, but.
You have a million?
That would be my guess.
Okay.
I mean, I know that area, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Um, okay. Is there any, any further questions, comments? Okay. So with that, I will make a motion to recommend city council approve the concept plan for Tulare Curve, a ten-lot subdivision, subject to the following ten conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
First, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
opposed, motion carries. And there is second motion on this one or no?
No.
That was it?
No, I think it was just that first one.
Okay. Uh, I guess that's it. Thank you guys for your input.
You're all going to be around for the rest of our meeting though, right?
Okay. Uh, I'm C, that's us, the, uh, yeah, so planning commission chairman, vice chairman.
I make a recommendation, Chairman Brass, continue with chairman.
All's in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, I voted myself, I don't even know.
You better slide back. I'll save it for next time.
He's always excited to talk.
Yeah. I'll make the motion for Bansky to serve as vice chairperson.
Second.
Yes.
Second, all's in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, and then, you know, staff memo, joint work session. Do you want to touch on that or I think we all kind of know it's coming up.
Yeah. What is it, the last Monday of the month?
Yeah. So this, I did not have a slide deck for it.
Okay. Five-thirty, the twenty-fourth.
Yeah. So this, this memo is really just a, you know, an FYI or, you know, kind of heads up, right? To you all, uh, and ma- make sure that you're all aware that February twenty-fourth, we're going to have a joint work session, uh, with us, with the city council. And this is to continue the work that we've been doing over the last, what, year, year and a half? Maybe two now, um, uh, working towards updating our zoning code. So if you, you know, way, way back, uh, I think it was end of twenty-twenty-three, we presented to everyone, this is maybe more for the, the new folks, but also reminders to folks who, and memories are getting fuzzy. Um, we presented outcomes of a, of an audit that was done against our zoning code. As the bank. For review of our zoning code, to look at area. No need for update to bring it up to current practice, best practice, uh, alignment with state statute, um, things like that.
Yep.
And those results were presented at the time. And some recommendations were being made. And so since then, we've been working, um, with a consultant, HKGI is the name of the consultant. We have, City Chaska's a lot of experience. And it's, uh, IT that's. Streetscaping has been done throughout the neighborhood streets. I don't know, Melissa was working with them. So we've drawn a relationship and history in their business. We've been working now to look at our planning, development, second three. Base districts within our zoning code. Special regulations, our subdivision code, really. Um, and so we've had a couple of work sessions, um, to this point to look at specifics. And this will just be a, you know, get one more step in that process. Uh, that is, I think the hope here, the intent is that this would be the final work session of the series, joint work session of the series. And this time we'll be looking at our subdivision code and our special regulations. Special regulations getting to things like parking, um, you know, design, uh, building design and material requirements, um, landscaping, mighty quiet.
So we got a couple of hours maybe? What do you think we should plan on?
Yeah. Yep. So the work session will start at five-thirty, um, be done at seven.
It's a city, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Hard to, um, for, for all of you, you know, can you just confirm with us that, um, oh, this is the, where I'm quiet? If you can just confirm with us your ability to attend, um, or maybe we'll assume you can if you, and if you can't, let us know. Um, I don't know if you, you have already kind of let us know about that.
Sure.
Um, but yeah, if you can be there, it'd be, it'd be really helpful. We appreciate your attendance. Well, I, more than likely, I will not be there. Our schedule changed a little bit when I'm coming back that day, but I don't know if I'll be able to be there by five-thirty. So. Yeah.
So good. Before I adjourn here, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Quickly, new members, quick little one minute about yourself. Why, why do you want to join and kind of, I guess, maybe what do you do for work or career? How does, does it relate anyway or?
Sure. So Scott Saylor, nice to meet you all. And you said Siler, which is oppressive. That's the actual pronunciation of our last name. Not, no.
There was an Aaron Siler that was on the commission for a while.
Funny. We're probably distantly related, but I don't know him. Um, but anyway, we changed it to Saylor long ago just because that's how most people actually do the spelling. Anyway, we're not here talking about my last name, but I was impressed. Not a lot of people say Siler. So that was a, that was a fun little deal. Um, I've lived in Chaska for eight and a half years. Uh, lived in St. Louis Park before that, lived in Minneapolis prior to that. And I'm from Alexandria, Minnesota originally, for those of you who know central Minnesota. Um, I'm here with my wife and two kids. We love Chaska. I wanted to get more involved. Uh, seemed like a, a nice way to do that. So I'm excited, I'm open-minded to learn more about, uh, you know, how all this works. And, uh, I think I'll be able to contribute over time. And, um, excited to get to know all of you more through this process as well. Um, in terms of work background, I spent, uh, over fifteen years in corporate strategy and corporate marketing roles with various, uh, large companies in town. Um, and now I'm very fortunate to be able to be a full-time dad. Um, so I enjoy that and I'm trying to use my additional time to do things like this.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome. Cool.
And Sarah, right?
Yes. Sarah Rosted, also a Chaska resident for, I want to say, hold on, how old's my youngest kid? Um, about five and a half years. And prior to living in Chaska, I lived in Eden Prairie. That's where I grew up, went to high school. That's where I grew up, went to high school. And I was referred to, um, applying to be on a committee by Danell Hiyei. She's a neighbor of mine. And the parks board was full. So they asked if I was flexible. Thankfully I was. I started to appreciate the planning committee because I live on Jasper Circle South. So I got to know you all through community meetings. Um, yes, we're still kind of in limbo as to what's going to happen with that development. But I am quite passionate about it. And I started learning about ordinances and zoning and all of these really cool things that are core to planning. Um, it relates to my work. I'm the chief of staff for operations, product and analytics. So I plan everything to the T. Prior to that role, I was in continuous improvement forever. So, um, I'm excited to get more involved. I understand that I have a lot to learn. In my free time, I hang out with my two kiddos and I coach girls on the run as well. My kids go to La Academia.
Hey, well, thank you.
Awesome.
I work with Andy Hiyei. He's an associate.
Yeah, he can.
Call yours.
Oh, cool. Small world.
Yeah.
He's great.
Yep. Um, okay. So with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Awesome. All's in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries. We're adjourned.